Okay, this September 26, 2018 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. I have no changes. Anyone have changes? Hearing none, good to approve the agenda as it stands. Michael?
I move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Michael, second by Denise. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Sixth in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Public comment? No public, okay. Approval of the minutes. Could I motion to approve the September 12, 2018 minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve the September 12 minutes.
Moved by Denise, her second. Second by Michael. Are there changes? Hearing none? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The minutes are approved. Okay, we have announcements, commendations, and comments from the district. Did you what? Okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update on the schedule, the new bell schedule in the high school. So, we have been in school 20, I counted today, we've been in school 20 days, and I'm really happy to say that I think the transition has gone much more smoothly than I anticipated, and people are transitioning pretty quickly. There are a few things I want to note about the schedule. Students, and faculty, and parents have all expressed that they feel that the day has slowed down dramatically. We have fewer transitions, fewer classes during the day. One student, I was in the senior corps talking to kids about the schedule change, and one of the students said to me that the fewer transitions make it easier for him to concentrate during class because he's not changing seven different classes, seven different teachers throughout the school day. So, it's actually allowed him the ability, he feels like, to really concentrate during the school day, more so than the old schedule did. We're also noticing that students are reporting anecdotally that they have less homework to bring home, which they're finding, that they are finding more time during the school day to get their homework done. This is in part because of the flex time that we have during the school day. Some students are choosing to use that as a study hall if they do not have to seek out additional help from a teacher for relearning and reassessment. The one, there are some bumps in the road that we have found, and we're still working through those challenges. Some of them have to do with, when I talk about the schedule, I talk about it being a very innovative schedule that's within a traditional school day. And so, if we are working with another school that has a traditional schedule, sometimes that can create some challenges. And so, we find some challenges with the CTE and kids that are traveling, and also with service providers as well. So, we're still working through those challenges, but we are finding that the schedule has had a lot of positive impacts. Faculty and students are noting that. And Patty can, I'm sure she could speak to that as well. The flex advisory period, we're still working with that. Advisory program is still implemented, and Mike McCann has been working with the counseling office to make sure that that programming is sent out to advisors, and is working on the fidelity of that also. And the flex, how flex time is used, that is being, that committee is continuing to work. So, they meet regularly, the faculty do, in that committee with Mark and Mike, and they talk about that flexible time and how that flexible time is being utilized. The adaptive scheduler program, that's an add-on in Power School, that's what we're using during that flex time for kids to schedule out, and we have found that to be extremely beneficial. And one of the kids that I talked to talked a lot about how last year it felt kind of chaotic during that office hour time because kids were moving and people were moving throughout the building. And this year, it really feels organized, and very, it's a lot easier for kids to sign up to see their teachers this year, to be able to access their teachers during that flexible time. So, and we're finding that with teachers as well. So, that time, that flexible time, we'll continue to look at it and evaluate how it's being used, and same thing with the schedule, and see what's working and what's not working, and continue to hopefully make a smooth transition throughout the year. So, we're very excited. And I was at a conference recently where the schedule had gotten brought, some of the schools had been talking about the schedule, and Jim was there. And they, we, it ended up, the conference is about ELOs, and we were presenting about what we're doing here at the high school for ELOs, but it ended up becoming a conversation about sort of this innovative schedule that we have at the high school. And there's a lot of schools that are interested, and they've reached out, they're interested in learning about our adaptive scheduler program, they're interested in learning about how we came through this decision-making process with faculty to have a new schedule, and what that schedule looks like, and what the benefits have been. So, we're very excited to share some of what we're doing with other schools as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I was at the high school open house, and it was really amazing in terms of the concert. And I just, so many kids, it's just unbelievable. And also, to Suzanne for her presentation, and the students that also kind of shared their experience with how they started out, you know, in one mindset, and grew as the school years went on. So, I was very impressed.
Other comments?
I was also at the open house for the high school, and I was actually impressed on all the things we've talked about in the last couple of years, kind of really being put into play. And it was interesting to kind of see it from the teacher's perspective, how they're putting all the social learning, all the other things we've all taught. It was definitely different from last year, and it was a noticeable difference. I remember I made note to my wife, I'm like, "Ah, I can see it all getting plugged in now." So, I'm happy with it. My daughter's a lot less stressed, I can tell you that, which means I'm less stressed. So, that's a plus, but keep it up. It's been great, and you and your staff have been doing a great job, and all the teachers were awesome. So, I'm very happy.
Ken?
Something I noticed from doing the manifest last week, and then again noticed this week, and raised it last week, just in a little discussion, but we do spend a good deal of money buying bottled water. And from my involvement with Town of Durham, one of crises that we're facing is that the market has really gone away for much of recycling. Right now, for the Town of Durham, for recycling paper, we pay more than if we threw it in a landfill. Recycling of plastic has really fallen by the wayside as well. It used to go to China. China's not taking our plastic anymore. Last year, I think we heard from Sustainability Committee about thoughts about bottled water, and I think we talked about maybe trying to eliminate its availability at the elementary school, and certainly knowing what's going on at Massway, and problems with wells and the work. And to me, that's where bottled water is important. But I feel that even if our district is making money by selling bottled water, and that's something supporting our nutrition program, I just think it's really not the way we should go. And I'd love to have maybe a discussion put on an agenda, whether it's time for us to do away with the purchase of bottled water and stop selling bottled water, and make every attempt we can to make it available, that people can get water when they need it, with containers that they can carry with them, and not add to landfills and the ocean, the plastic floating in the ocean, so.
So, I can just address that, Ken. We have eliminated plastic bottles from the elementary schools for this year, and our goal for next year was the middle school, and the year after that would be the high school. So, we have a three-year plan to reduce our plastic footprint.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I feel we could be bolder, certainly with the state of the environment and where we're heading environmentally, and with the recycle, I mean, it's new that the recycling market has really tanked, and I think it's time to reevaluate whether we really need a three-year phase in or just do it.
So, that would be a budget issue, too. What would it cost to phase out the selling of bottled water in the high school? And, you know, how much would we have to put into the nutrition budget to compensate for that?
And certainly, right, it's not as if it comes without some cost to the district, but I just, I just feel ethically we should be making.
So, we'll have that ready for the budget workshop, Ken, because we've already done that analysis, which is why we chose to phase it. But if the board wants to accelerate it, you know, we can have that discussion at workshop, and we'll have the impact of that ready for you guys, for your discussion.
Great.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none? Okay. So, we have the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Just have two quick things I wanted to mention. One, I was at a workshop yesterday, or yeah, yesterday, learning about the new Title IV grants for the state of New Hampshire, and found out that Oyster River District was awarded $22,935.72 in a Title IV grant, which has to be used towards STEM-related promoting of educational activities. So, as luck would have it, we had a team of teachers that were going to this workshop today, which is on the future-ready assessment, the three tech integrators and Kerry Vase. So, they collected that information. The requirement of the grant is that we do an assessment of what our needs are, and then we can use the money towards those needs. And certainly, in talking with John Silverio today over at the middle school about the 65 kids that showed up to do robotics the other night, and another, I don't know how many were coming tonight to another parent meeting, clearly there's a demand there. So, very exciting to have that money, and I'll keep you posted as to how we're able to use it. But it's a new thing from the state. Typically, Title IV money was granted on a needs basis. So, typically, it tied into your Title I money, which was tied into, you know, free introduced lunch rates, that kind of thing. In this case, they have a whole different formula, and fortunately for us, we got $22,000. So, good news. The other thing I just wanted to quickly mention, I also found out at this same workshop that the, as you know, last year was the first year of New Hampshire SAS testing, and at the end of the year, the DOE was really pushing us, and all schools were asked to report out their results. And the individual student scores are 100% accurate, but they have discovered that the cut scores that they released over the summer are not accurate. So, I will have to give you an amended version of the report I gave you in August. In some cases, it's good news for us, in other cases, it's not quite as good news. So, anyway, but I just wanted you to know that if you see any data in the news or anything that does not reflect the information I shared with you in August, they did change the cut scores, and that's going to impact our scores.
Science exam or the?
The science exam, well, the science exam, they did not release those scores until just two weeks ago. So, I've only, so just before I reported to you guys, I think it was the last meeting. So, science is not affected by that because they waited on those, but ELA and math, the cut scores had to be adjusted. So, and I think this is a one-time problem, because again, this is the first year of the test, and I think they were struggling with the mathematics of it. So, right, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. I have actually a lot of things to talk about, or maybe not a lot of things, but things that are fairly important in terms of our strategic plan and our goals. So, I want to give the board an update related to the new middle school. So, I sent you the schedule that we got from the architect, and that's in your packet. And I put subject to change on there, not the architect, because, you know, the fact is that as we get more information, some of this stuff might get adjusted. So, that's that piece. But the more important piece I want to talk about is Tom and I, and Jim Rosick and so forth, we looked at the alternative site for the middle school, which, we went through that whole process last year, and we looked at various sites we thought might work as a remote location, a different location than the current middle school. And so, I contacted the owners of the Goss property off of Technology Drive. You can picture that, that's Upper Main Street in Durham. And about a week and a half ago, and asked them if they were interested in talking to us about selling basically this section of their property. So, if you've been on the Goss property, there's this giant building right at the end of Technology Drive, massive building, probably the biggest building in Durham, or at least, maybe it is even, it's bigger than some of UNH's facilities. But this piece of property kind of has this leg that sticks out here. This is Route 4. So, they met us today on the Beach Hill Road. So, if you go through the intersection on the Mass Road, it's going to be the first left after you go through that light.
Madbury Road.
Thank you. Madbury Road, thank you, Michael. Madbury Road, and it's the first left. It's, you know, residential, maybe four, five, six houses at most on that, and then it turns into a durat road, and then it hits the woods. So, that's one way that you can access this property. Then the other way you can access this property is going up Technology Drive and following the perimeter of that parking lot, and that would get you into this section of the property. And there is currently no access from Route 4, but you can see from this drawing that this is Route 4. It's right on the edge of the property, so, you know, perhaps that might be someday something, but there's no access there now. Just pointing it out is, just to give you a sense of how close it is. The property is really nice. It's a nice piece of property. It has some wetlands at this end of it, but there's a nice high and dry spot right about in the middle. Really beautiful. And so, you know, like in any new development, I mean, there's a lot of work that will go into making this ready for a school, over and above what we would have to do in the current site. So, Ron LaValle showed up, the architect, and Andre showed up, the construction manager. And so, by the time we have the workshop, they'll have a lot more information for you guys in relation to this particular piece of property that the committee last year thought would make a viable off-site location. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that that activity is going on. The gentleman who's the vice president who met us, his name is Ben, and he is just a really interesting guy, and very pleasant. And so, he's going to send me technical drawings that he has, he's going to send me the contact. He says he's not the contact for the sale of property, the property is owned by a development company in New York City. So, he's going to send me that. And, you know, I'll, from there, I'll make a contact in New York City and see what their interest is in selling that property. So, just wanted to make sure you guys knew that was going on, because, you know, we meet every two weeks, and this particular meeting happened, you know, today, could have happened, you know, phone call happened after our last board meeting. So, just trying to make sure you know what's going on. Denise?
I appreciate that. I, you know, as someone who's not part of those meetings, I think I appreciate having these little mini updates, even though, you know, doesn't maybe go into a lot of detail, but just to kind of, you know, these are the sort of the things that we're talking about at this time, that kind of thing. So, thank you.
Well, it really goes down to the fact that the board, until the board finalizes its decision, you know, I have an obligation to pursue both options, and get a little bit of pushback, but it's important that you guys have all the information you need to make an informed decision. And, you know, that's why I'm doing the work, because I don't want you to get out there a month from now and say, "Hey, what happened with this issue?" You know, it's, I'm still working on these issues in the background, so that you'll have the information you need when it's time for you to make a decision.
So, he'll have an estimate on what it would take to build on this site.
Yeah, so, yep, the architect, Ron LaValle, is actually working on a current project where they chose to develop a piece of property that was new to the school system. And so, he knew, you know, right off the bat in terms of what infrastructure needs that would need to be. You know, if the Beach Hill Road was the access to this property, it would have to be dramatically improved, because it's really just a country road. It'd have to be widened and so forth. And, you know, it's at least worth a question to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation whether they'd have any interest in having a west-directed exit onto that property, if it was something that we were going to build for a school. And, you know, we may not have all of those answers, what it would cost to bring gas lines to that property, what it would cost to tap into the electrical grid from that property, all of that kind of stuff. So, that's really why we have Ron and Andre. They can figure that all out in very broad brushstrokes, of course, and give us a sense of what it would cost to develop that into a viable option.
And one question I had of Ron today was, you know, that I think that if you build on that, if you buy and get a new site, it changes the timeline, because you'd probably have to go to the voters to get.
We would have to go to the voters.
To buy the land.
Right.
So that you have an inflation factor. If it's delayed two years, you have an inflation factor of 4% each year is what he's figuring. So, that will be figured in, because I think, you know, it changes the timeline, you know. I think if we get it approved, you know, in 2020, I mean, we own the land, pretty much you could start, you know, start working right away. This would take longer to, so I asked him to figure that in, but he took, you know, a good look at just, particularly just what are we taking in terms of access, development, you know, bringing in power, gas to the school. So, we'll have a good sense of that.
At the last meeting, you mentioned that you would want questions to be kind of presented in advance.
Yeah, that mean if you can. Michael has sent me a great list of questions, so, I mean, absolutely, if you can give me questions.
Maybe this is way premature, but, I mean, one thing that I would want to know, too, is in, and maybe it's helpful in looking at the two sites, but looking at energy efficiencies and whether there is a way for kind of energy generation at sites, and trying to move that school to being even a self-sufficient kind of unit.
We actually have had that tentative conversation with the architect already about the school being either net zero or even net plus. And so.
Maybe a garden on the roof and things like that. That was part of the presentation, it's really from almost everybody, so that's really part of the current plan, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions related to that? Okay, so, I'm going to skip over to the property that we own, and talk a little bit about a public hearing that I've scheduled. So, Sue and I have been working with the Town of Durham, and, you know, we wanted to get the surveyor in and figure out how many viable house lots there is on the Orchard Drive property. And remember, by town regulation, this property, the most it could provide is four, but all indications are it'll be less than four. But the town recommended, and to Sue and I agreed, that we really should have a public hearing on the property specifically for the Butters. And that letter, the Butters, we contacted the Butters, and we're going to do this particular meeting on the 16th at 7:00 here in the library. And the Butters, you know, if you see this letter, it's, you know, signed by three, six, nine, well, 11 different family's. Wonderful letter, just a beautiful letter. You know, they're very interested in, you know, the school's decisions related to this property, and largely, they're just asking if we would consider creating access to the trails that already exist in and around that property. And then Tom and Kenny and Al got contacted by Dennis Meadows, and he also has some ideas related to that property, providing access through the development of bridges.
What, you know, bridge over Oyster River.
Yeah, a bridge. And so, that hearing, you know, is not, first of all, a hearing doesn't require all of you to be there, but if you can be there, it would be terrific. It's not a required meeting, it's a public hearing. Public hearings are usually run by me, and, but it's always great to have board members present, because you get to hear directly about what the community's concerns are in a hearing. So, if you can be there, that would be terrific. Again, it'll be the 16th at 7:00 here in this library.
Oh, in the library, okay.
How large was the group of Butters, or what was considered, what was the radius of neighbors that were considered Butters?
We got the list from the town. So, we said, "Give us the list of the Butters, and that's who we'll contact." So, that, so we didn't make up the list, we got it strictly from the town.
Ballpark, how many names were on?
Do you know how many Butters you contacted, Sue?
I don't know. Wendy did the list.
Yeah, I don't, but I can get that to you all in an email, Michael.
I'm just, I'm kind of curious, yeah, I'm curious how many of the neighborhoods, is it just the Stevens Way Orchard Drive neighborhood, or does it also include the folks on the other side of the river?
No, it just would have been the Stevens Way Orchard Drive neighbors. And, but it's not, the public hearing is not restricted to them. We can have, if anybody's interested at all in our disposition of this property, they're more than welcome to come. But these are the people that the town felt we needed to contact.
And I think it'd be important for people in my neighborhood, faculty, the faculty neighborhood, because if Dennis Meadows' project bears fruit, you could walk from the faculty neighborhood across the Oyster River into that property, you know, according to his plan, and then you're into those trails. So, it'd give really easy access for the faculty neighborhood to get into those trails, but it would require a shifting of a parcel to the town or to the university so that it's maintained, so it's open, so there isn't like a property right on Oyster River, so you wouldn't be able to go, you know, private property. So, yeah, he'll talk about that, but I mean, it's really interesting possibility, I think. And of course, Dennis Meadows has done heroic work in terms of giving land to the community and expanding possibilities for recreation and conservation. So, I hope, I think he's intending to come, I hope so.
Yeah, and I have a meeting with Dennis on Monday as well, so he'll get a chance to talk to me about what his plans are. My sense from looking, from what I know, is both Dennis and the Butters are, you know, being very understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. I think ultimately, once we know exactly how many house lots really are on this property, whether it's two or three, then, you know, then we can position ourselves to sell those lots. But then, you know, that might be a total of six acres out of 23, and I think that then the broader question beyond the house lots is, you know, what does the school board want to do in relation to the disposition of the rest of the property? Do we want to donate it to conservation efforts? Do we want to donate it to the Town of Durham? Do we want to donate it to the university? Because, quite frankly, once those lots are there, that's its value to us, the rest of it has no value to the school system, and so we should be looking for a way to benefit the community at large. And at that point, I think the donation of that property makes a lot of sense. Denise?
When will we know as far as the actual house lots and?
So, it's a great question, Denise. So, we could have known six weeks ago. However, because the town really felt it was important for us to have the conversation with the Butters, the surveyor is just waiting for a green light, and that green light will come the day after we have our public hearing. And Sue told me, you know, as soon as we tell them we're at the top of the list, it won't be one of these, we're going to wait six weeks, kind of thing. So, we should know, I would guess, by Thanksgiving. Yeah, I would say by Thanksgiving's a safe date. So, so that's, you know, again, you know, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of work that goes on in the background, and I'm just trying to be conscientious in making sure you guys know what's going on along those lines. I gave you some sample work from the strategic plan. I really want to commend the administration, and our faculty, and our support staff.
I'm sorry, before we go off of?
Before I go off on that topic.
Will the, will the, the hearing? Will the, will the, will the hearing be recorded?
No, it's, I don't record public hearings, so it's just, the only things that we record, Michael, usually are the board meetings themselves.
Right. No, I'm out of town that week.
Oh.
Is it possible to record it, Mr.?
Yeah. We can record it. Alex just said he'll make it happen. Okay.
It's an, it's an important decision.
Yeah. Then moving on to strategic plan, really what I've done here, again, is just trying to keep you guys abreast of the work we're doing. The administrators, the directors, and the faculty and the support staff have been great. We're in the closing stages of the building level work as well as the director work. And when I mean closing stages, it would mean that they've established their goals, their action strategies, and most importantly, it's been reviewed by their respective faculties and support staff. So that's all supposed to be done by Friday. And then I have about a month that I'm going to keep it with me and Todd and Catherine and Sue. And we're going to go through it to make sure that there is a consistency and a feel that is holistic as opposed to, you know, feel like it came from eight different places. And so as samples, and again, these are samples, he's not the finished product, but it'll give you a sense of where we're going. The yellow sheet represents, you have one for Massway, you have one for Facilities, and you have one for Nutrition. The yellow sheet is essentially the cover letter of where we want to go in the five years. So that gives you in one sheet, an overview of where Massway and Moheramet want to go in that five-year period. Then the white sheet represents the goals in the given year that they'll attempt to accomplish. So that's the structure of each division. And then Todd and Catherine, myself, and Sue, then on top of that, will put together the graphics for the district, will have some district goals, and will make it look like it's one document as opposed to eight different documents. So we're doing great work. You guys will get this in first blush in November, and it's what we consider finished draft version. And that, then you guys own it for a couple of months, and we'll do a workshop on it and have the administrators and directors present to answer questions, that kind of thing.
Can I make one suggestion, is you'd have some kind of glossary for acronyms? Because D E S S A, you know, I'm not sure, there's a, some of them I'm familiar with, M T E S S, I'm not sure if I could say what that one was, you know?
It's a tiered system.
Be glad to do that.
I think if anybody else reads it too, you know, from the outside, they would know what these are.
Right.
So I think it would just like list, you know.
Yep. Anything else stand out, Michael?
Well, the only thing that I see structurally that concerns me here is when I see continued, continued items from one year to the next, I feel like something like this, a year is a big enough chunk of time that we can break those down into smaller annual milestones.
You, the first year, break it down into smaller milestones?
No, like, for example, on the elementary one, the first year on competency-based education has a couple of items, and then the next year says same. All right, well, what's different about the second year than the first year? Why can't we move on to the development of ELA and math competencies? There's got to be something, it's a whole year. There's got to be something else there. The same thing is true on the kitchen equipment plan on the school nutrition side, and there's a couple of those in the facilities one as well. So I, I think those are big enough chunks that we can have a little bit more resolution to what's going on there.
Okay, great. Anything else stand out to anybody? So this is really just to give you a blush of where we're heading and give you a sense that, you know, we're on target, and I couldn't be prouder of the work that people are doing to get us there, so.
Let's be clear about when in 2024 this ends, too. Because 2024 is a whole year, so are we talking, when we say by 2024, does that mean the end of the '23, '24 school year? Does it mean the end of the calendar year, or what does that mean just as a, as a mental map?
Yep. Great, thank you. And anything else, again, you know, if you see something as you're looking at it, don't hesitate and drop me an email because, you know, we have an opportunity in this month to, you know, get it to a place where you guys want it. Then you have a month with it, or even longer if you want, because the current plan doesn't end until June, but I was thinking that we could probably get this done by February vacation, and then we'd know where we were going. You know, getting it to several months in advance would give us a chance to workshop it and then fine-tune it. All right, thank you. I don't know, I lost my agenda. I'm good.
Okay. A business administrator?
I'm going.
No? Student Center report?
Okay. So this week is Spirit Week, the most exciting week of the year. The Senate has been pretty, has been working really hard on it. It's, although it's the most fun week of the year, it's one of the most chaotic in, planning-wise, for the students at least. But we've had, we have themed days this year. We had Class Color Day. Seniors were red, juniors purple, so forth. We had Twin Day on Tuesday. Today was Decade Day. I thought it was really cool. So each grade had a different decade. The seniors were the 70s, juniors were 80s, 90s, 2000s. I thought it was pretty neat. Tomorrow is Fashion Disaster Day, and Friday is the pep rally and Blue and White Day as per usual. Yeah, so pep rally's on Friday, very exciting, one of my favorite days of the year, especially with the field events afterwards and lunch outside. We have the usual events for Spirit Week as well, so last night we had the hypnotist show. I couldn't go, but I've heard very good things about it. And tomorrow night is Mr. Bobcat, which is also one of my favorite events of the year, although this year we're having an issue with the number of guys that actually want to be part of it. So we, we had a good amount, and then a couple dropped out, so we're kind of struggling with that, but I think it will go smoothly anyway. I just wanted to mention that the boys' soccer team is doing very, very well and working very hard. Last week, we had the first Alice Drill of the year, so some of the kids evacuated to the middle school and some stayed, depending on where the threat was in the building. I think it's an interesting way to go about things. Yeah. Okay. Four students went to the Second Annual Teen Highway Safety Conference in Concord, and that was today. There was some Senate members and some SALT members, which is the student athletic leadership team, along with Officer Malaski. October 2nd is Financial Aid Night. October 3rd, New Hampshire listens from the Carcy School of Public Policy at UNH. They'll be coming to the library here to have a discussion with students about climate, diversity, and inclusion at the school. And we're still trying to rally, rally students to come to that event. Star testing for the freshmen will be on October 3rd, and the PSATs for juniors will be on October 10th.
Denise? Is that October 3rd? Is that during the school day that the Carcy School is coming to address, or is that-
It's right at the end of the day.
Okay.
I just have a question for you. You've had more time to get into the schedule. What's your sense of the schedule?
I'm really enjoying it. I'm enjoying it a lot. I have less homework, which is really nice, and it's really, it makes having a free period or a study hall much more helpful because you have those block days so much more often, so you can really get way more done. And it's especially helpful for me, but the seniors in general, in terms of getting college application thing hurdles out of the way, because there's a lot to that. I, I'm really enjoying it a lot.
It just seems less frantic, you know?
Yeah, very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, review of Kenny Rotner's letter to the Secretary of Education. Wonder if we could have a motion to endorse the sending of this letter, and then if there are any corrections, we can have that done as well. Denise?
I'll make a motion to send Kenny Rotner's letter as written.
Put by Denise. Is there a second? I'll second it. Are there editorial changes? Kenny, you noticed some, I think, in reading through, right? Were there some?
Typo.
Typos, yeah.
Yeah. Just in the third paragraph, there should be a period after inappropriately, and then "we" should be capitalized. And in the first line of the fourth paragraph, two-thirds, three-quarters of the ways down, the "the" should be a "that." That's all I picked up.
I don't know if you wanted to add this in, but in the third paragraph, when you mentioned adding to the confusion of evolving fast-moving situations, just that phrase, I don't know if you wanted to add some clarification just about how much stress it would put the teachers under, about this, how much stress it would, it would make, it would give to the staff for having to carry those firearms and be responsible about that?
That's a great addition. I'm fine with that.
Patty, can you speak, can you speak to that from a student perspective? You know, in terms of, you know, if faculty were allowed to bring firearms, how would that make you feel as a student?
I would be much more uneasy. I, I fully, I have trust in our faculty, and I know that they're, that they would be well-trained because it's such an important issue, but I, I just would, I would be uneasy having, having people other than the trained police officer have guns in the school.
Thanks.
So I'm wondering in terms of your point, Patty, if there's, adding to the confusion of evolving fast-moving situations, wonder if you could have like a comma there, increasing the risk that firearms will be used inappropriately, and some like creating a stressful demand upon teachers or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be, would that do it?
I agree with that.
Okay. Add, you know, starts with adding to the confusion of evolving fast-moving situations, comma, delete the "and," increasing the risk that firearms will be used inappropriately, and, I forget what I said.
And creating a stressful-
Creating a stressful situation for, for teachers.
I wonder if it'd be a stressful situation for faculty and students.
For faculty and students.
That's why I asked Patty the question about how it would feel as a student to know that there's a loaded firearm in front of the classroom.
I just had a couple, just grammatical things, and so there's kind of taken, these don't, I couldn't resist.
Go for it.
Third paragraph, second line, I think I would put a colon there, the opposite effect, because you're kind of saying like namely what that effect is. Second line, I'd say that'd be a colon, and I would put a comma.
Third paragraph.
Third paragraph, I'm sorry. Third paragraph, second line.
Yeah, instead of a colon.
Yeah, after effect. This is hugely important. And I would put, of evolving, comma, fast-moving situations, we'll have a hyphen, fast-moving is a, kind of hyphenated. But the comma, at least, maybe the comma you don't need, but fast-moving, I think you need a hyphen. That's it. Good job.
There's a certain level of pleasure in that.
And chagrin on my part here. Going to silence me going forward.
It's clean, it's good, it's good. So we have a motion in a second, and we have these, you know, so, and we've had these additions, so could I have a motion to approve this with these editorial modifications?
We already have a motion.
Okay, okay.
Denise's motion, she can just take it as a friend.
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, the letter's approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for doing that, Kenny. Heather?
Okay, so as Heather's coming to the podium, I just wanted to introduce that the reason we're doing the mental health and wellness presentation tonight is because of the workshop on the 10th. And normally Heather would do this with Ryan, but in order to be able to accomplish this and stick to our agreed-to timeline for our presentations this year, I asked Heather to do her piece tonight. Ryan will come back on the 26th of October and do the shape piece. So I apologize for breaking it apart because otherwise there wouldn't, we would be way off our timeline for the year. So I asked Heather if she would do this, and she was more than willing, so it's all yours, Heather.
Kind of talk about our goals, kind of on the surface level. We'll get a little bit deeper into that when Ryan comes back, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on shape because this whole spiel will be about that. But before we get started, I just wanted to kind of do a little bit of a review in terms of how we kind of got here for people who are new or maybe need a little refresher on the work that we've done. So I kind of was thinking about, you know, kind of where we started with the mental health initiatives in the district and kind of how we got here. And it really brought to mind kind of the evolution of our office changing guidance counselor to school counselor. And that was for a few reasons. I think often when we have conversations with people about that, they kind of think about that in terms of semantics, you know, what does it matter if we say guidance or school? And it matters, and it matters for a number of reasons. One of the purposes for kind of making that shift was to kind of shift the mindset and philosophy around what the job of a school counselor is in the school in terms of looking at the whole child instead of just that career and guidance piece, the vocational piece that it was kind of intended for. And so the other piece of that was to kind of shift to a more proactive approach to solving the problems for students versus a reactive approach, which was kind of a cycle that we were stuck in. I think that, you know, like, like the mental health goal and push, we, we had lots of enthusiastic people, kind of some indifferent people, some resistant people, but we kind of kept pushing through. And I think, at least at the high school level, you know, we've kind of not just gotten people to say school counselor and kind of cringe if somebody says the G-word, but they, they kind of see the difference in what we're doing. And so, you know, I think the fact that the district several years ago adopted the mental health wellness as a goal was really reaffirming to that work for the counselors. It really kind of validated the very important work that they do every day, so I just kind of wanted to point that out. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing this year, but before they do that, I want to do a little bit of a yearly review. The 15, 16 school year was kind of the first year that the Wellness Committee was meeting regularly and looking at different pieces of information to kind of look at our wellness in the district. During that year, we completed a wellness fair, which had both the vendor aspect and also an educational component. So we had a variety of educational pieces during the evening event. We also completed a number of trainings. One was with Dr. Robert Macy of the International Trauma Center. He came and, it was about 35 district staff members. We completed the post-traumatic stress management course, and we also received training in psychological first aid. Part of what we were doing in the first years of our mental health program was building capacity within our district to support our students, ensuring that all faculty and adults who work here are able to support students in need. So that was kind of the base of our work moving forward. The following year, the 16, 17 school year, one of our big pushes was to welcome former Justice Broderick to our schools to talk to our students about stigma and mental health. We also brought in Dr. Barbara Van Dahlin, who is the founder of Change Direction, so she came and spoke to the community and delivered kind of an uplifting message, talking about stigma and the need for community intervention in terms of mental health. We also were able to complete the district-wide crisis plan for response to trauma, so that was a pretty big undertaking. And we've gone through a couple iterations, but we, I think we feel like- we, I think we feel like we're in a fairly good place with the crisis plan at this point. And so that, that was a result of a lot of that work. And the other pieces we began are connect suicide prevention training for our district. So during that year, we had about 35 staff members trained in connect, and from there, 10 went on to become kind of the train-the-trainers model. And we've, we're in year three of implementing the connect training. We kind of had a four- to five-year goal. I think we may, I don't want to speak out of turn, we may be able to finish it this year, or at least into next year, so about a year early. So that's kind of exciting. Last year, we were looking at evaluating our systems in terms of needs assessment, what are we missing, how do we better support students, is there a better way to streamline? And the shape assessment was kind of the tool that would be able to do all of that for us. So we spent the bulk of the year as a mental health wellness committee working on the shape assessment, all while other pieces of, levels of the district were doing different things. For instance, the K4 community was working on the SEL programming and getting that into place. The middle school counseling program was doing a number of site visits, evaluating the curriculum. In the high school, we focused on wellness in general. Specifically, we implemented SOS, Signs of Suicide Prevention Training for freshmen. There was a homework study revision of the bell schedule, so kind of looking at that overall picture of wellness. So that brings us to this year. We are pretty much done with the shape assessment. When we started talking about the goals for this year, we, we didn't have all of the information. But if we look at the district, the goals across the district, they're fairly similar. All the buildings are looking at SEL curriculum, and they're also looking at the MTSS structures for mental health. So SEL is the social emotional, social emotional learning curriculum. MTSS is the multi-tiered systems of support. And we're all, as Dr. Morris mentioned earlier, working on the five-year strategic plan. And I just have a couple items up top, so we've talked a lot about the CASL standards. So in our work as counselors, each level has been aligning curriculum to the CASL standards, so going through lesson plans, fitting their lesson plans with each of the standards to make sure they're hitting different areas. The shape system has the tiered support, which is what we would find in the MTSS systems that we're creating. Another thing you'll notice, and Ryan will talk a lot about this when he comes back, is though we weren't quite finished with the shape system, the themes that kind of started coming out were very similar across the district. One of the things that we kept in mind was the seven indicators of quality assessment in the shapes evaluation. So I just wanted to kind of refresh your memory about those. Really, the focus, for the most part, is on teaming and evidence-based services for our students. So in general, all three, three levels, I guess I break it up into three levels, all levels are working on multi-tiered systems of support. The elementary levels have been focusing a little bit on the academic side this year. There's going to be kind of a little bit more integration into the mental health side, and hopefully Mary Ann Nice will be able to visit the high school a few times. She's kind of working her way up through the district, so we're looking forward to them. Screening tools is also a K-12 common theme that we've been looking at. This year, for the elementary, they're going to be test-driving, well, they are test-driving the open circle curriculum, and they're going to be using the DESA screening tool. And I think, Denise, I think you had asked earlier what that is. And the DESA is, it stands for Devourer Student Strength Assessment, and it's a way to measure SEL competencies, so the skills that students are gaining through whatever curriculum you're using, or whatever skills you're delivering. In the middle school, the middle school is, has, is in year two of their advisory program, so they're working on delivering, developing curriculum that aligns with CASL standards to deliver to their students. And what I'm most excited about, one of the things that we had kind of hoped to be able to do, and we are, is bringing Haven. Haven is a organization that does a lot of work with children around personal body safety, kind of starting in the younger grades, and they work their way up through different topics like sexual harassment, bullying, consent, respect, empathy, media. So they have a lot of great programming, and this year, we're going to be able to introduce them in grades five through eight, which means they will be in our schools K through eight. And we may be able to get them into the ninth grade towards the end of the year. They have a very, very tight schedule. I'm actually going to be scheduling them into ninth grade for next year, this month. So it's, you have to kind of get ahead of the game. So that's going to be a great program. And then for the high school, if you recall last spring, we had a mental health forum for senior students as they transitioned out of our high school. And one of the things that we talked about with some of the students who were part of that planning, who have graduated and since moved on to their next adventure, was that we would follow through and make sure that the rest of the student body received the same or similar programming. We had kind of brainstormed topics, and we are going to be doing that. So on the 16th of October, is, we're going to have a community mental health forum. That, hopefully, the flyer, fingers crossed, will be going out tomorrow, kind of the save the date. And during that week, we're going to be bringing in classes during our flex time to deliver some different programming. So we're still working out the kinks of that, but we have a pretty involved and dedicated group of students who are working on putting this together. So I think it's going to be a really good program for the fall. The other piece that we've continued to do is the signs of suicide. So we've worked with the exercise physiology and wellness department to implement the SOS training through their curriculum, so that we can access all ninth graders. We're hoping this year to work with NAMI to bring the youth connect suicide prevention training program to Oyster River. And this is a similar program in terms, if you reflect back to last year in the bystander training, where there were a number of adults and students trained, and they delivered the curriculum for the bystander training. The same concept is applied for the connect youth suicide prevention programming. And so we're hoping to be able to do that maybe this spring. And I think that's kind of the broad view. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yes?
Questions?
Two things. First of all, as far as Haven in the middle school, can you talk a little bit about where that curriculum is fitting in? Is it through health classes, or, you know, just kind of where in the schedule it's?
I don't believe it's through health. It's, it's through each grade level working with, the counselors are working with the teams.
Okay.
And finding dates that, that they can kind of fit the program in.
Okay.
And it's age-appropriate, so fifth graders are not talking about consent and that kind of thing. They're talking about personal body safety still, so, yeah.
Okay. And then, and then the second thing is, when you were, because you mentioned October 16th as a date, is that for community? Say that again, I kind of missed.
Yes, yes. So the 16th is a community, an evening event.
Okay, because that's the same date as the public hearing, so that's a conflict, but...
Maybe it's not. Okay, we can look at that.
Is it locked and loaded, Heather?
Yeah, but we can, we can work on it.
Well, if it is, it is. I mean, if it is, it's just, you know, it is what it is.
The only reason that I would move mine, but mine is a public.
Right.
Yeah, I can see what I can do.
Yeah, I mean, and don't feel like, I just, because you said the date, and I just wanted to clarify. What time is that?
It's 6:00 PM. I don't think we would want to have them on the same.
Denise, you're going to be here anyway.
Yeah, we would want, we wouldn't want to have them on the same night, so that people have the option to attend both.
Okay.
So I can look into that.
You're not using the library, right?
I'm sorry, what?
You're not using the library, right?
Yeah.
I, no, not now.
Oh, no.
No, I think we had planned, honestly, the students really liked the diversity forum last year, and so they were really hoping to, to kind of follow a similar format. So we have a series of speakers, at least three so far, maybe we might go up to four. So I think it'll be, it'll be good. And they have agreed to emcee, so they're, they're kind of really taking.
So you're thinking you're going to use the cafeteria?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'll work with Alexander. Pick a date.
Any questions?
With the screening tools, what kind of records?
I'm sorry.
With the screening tools, what kind of records are generated?
What kind of records?
Yeah.
So for the DESA, there's, the teacher would, for elementary level, they fill out a checklist, and it basically generates skills areas where students, it kind of gives you a summary of how your class is doing in a certain skill. So you might, you know, if personal space is an issue, you might pull out a lesson that can address personal space. It's, everything that we view, we use adheres to our privacy, student privacy rights. For screeners, for instance, the SOS program has a self-reported screener, so we do collect that. It's anonymous, so students don't write their name on it, but it's more of informing our programming. So if we noticed a lot of students were reporting, I mean, the screener doesn't do this, it screens for depression, so if we had a level of kind of depression, small level of depression in the freshman class, we might target some interventions for the freshman class, if that makes sense.
Other questions?
I just want to make a comment. So, you know, this was a board-directed goal four years ago, and, you know, at that point, it was more event-oriented. And one of the things that I wanted to point out tonight was how now it's a comprehensive K through 12 approach, and that the counseling team really is leading the charge across the system. And, and part of the work that I would want to emphasize that Heather mentioned was the idea that the counselors can't do this work by themselves. And so what they've been doing is training the faculty to be basically liaisons for the counseling department, and giving them a skill set, so that the counselors can deal with the, the larger issues, more intense issues, and our faculty can deal with the less intensive issues. If you think about it, you know, we have 200 faculty, and about nine counselors, give or take.
Yeah.
So if we tried to do everything through the counseling department at all the levels, we would never be able to have the impact that we want to have. And so, you know, the most, I think the biggest thing that has changed under Heather was this idea of capacity building across, across grade levels and across buildings, and also bringing, bringing a level of expertise to our faculty that didn't exist before. So I'm, I just, I really wanted to point it out, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School list of activities stipends. Denise?
I'll make a motion to, excuse me, approve the Oyster River Middle School list of activities stipends.
Moved by Denise, there's a second. Dan, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, school board committee updates. Denise?
Long-range planning committee met last week and basically looked at the data comparing what the projections were to actual, and I will say, as off as it, you know, the kindergarten is definitely difficult. Part of it is we just don't have enough years to really be able to accurately predict. But first grade was right on, compared, you know, we don't, that wasn't based on October 1st, which is the official enrollment, but just based on opening day. So it was just kind of interesting, and we, we just talked about, you know, basically, well, actually, there were a couple specific questions. One was just in terms of Barrington students and in the enrollment projections for the Barrington students, and just to get a better handle on high school projections. And the other was the whole shifting from O'Haremit to Mast Way, and how that would, because the other thing that, of course, is very difficult to predict, is that whole split between the two schools. So we, we did spend some time talking about that. And we meet again, I believe, in mid-October after we have the official October 1st enrollment information.
And the $64,000 question is, is the kindergarten enrollment issue an anomaly, or is that a trend?
Right.
I think that, that, a lot hinges upon that.
Well, again, one of the, one of the things that's, you know, I'm using the word unique to our district, maybe it's not all that unique, but certainly this tendency for us to have that positive progression ratio where we, we add students every year, you know, so you can look at whatever our kindergarten enrollment is, we're going to have more students by the time it's fourth grade, fifth grade, because families move in. And so that, you know, I mean, yes, kindergarten enrollment obviously impacts, obviously, but there is that, that always, so, you know, you always look at that and think, okay, it's going to be smaller classes, but then you look at that same class in fourth grade, and lo and behold, you know, a number of students have moved in, so.
Other committee?
Disaster was avoided. We called up from the minors today. Dan, pinch-hit on the manifest committee. We did not find any grammatical errors at all, and, and the math was right as well.
You checked it off.
We approved it all.
Yeah. Very good. Very good, very good. Let's see. And you've had a report of, you know, the, the building committee. Public comment? Dean?
I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I'll just reiterate what Denise and Brian said, that curriculum, or whatever the night is at the high school, was awesome. The band was amazing, and it was lots of fun meeting, meeting the teachers and trying out the new schedule, and trying to understand what it was all about, so.
Good chat. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean. Closing actions, we have the schedule coming up. I will be away in Europe for, particularly between now and the next meeting, and I've asked Denise to take over, so she'll, so if you want to contact the chair.
So no issues. No issues.
Go to Denise, she's, you know, in charge. I'll be thinking of you, though. So we have the meeting scheduled here. So we have a, we need to go into, is it a non-meeting session or non-public?
It should be a non-public.
Yeah, yeah. So can we have a motion to go into non-public for the purpose of strategy negotiations with respect to collective bargaining?
So it would be New Hampshire State Law RSA 91-8, colon, 3, 2, and it would be a compensation of any public employee.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Denise. We have a roll call to go into non-public.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Francis Narrows, yes.
Okay, we're going into non-public.
Okay.
Heather, can, Heather, can you make sure your conference room is unlocked?